You turn around and then we were.
Well, I spend more time here than I do at home.
Brought in tough customer base.
I bet.
Beginning was tough, but it was the group that wasn't fearful.
So they wouldn't be mad.
I almost had a higher armed security.
Like a bouncer.
I'd never seen anything like.
Can you imagine bouncing grand? Hey, Mariah, how are you?
It's crazy, but our staff got through it. We all got through it. And we'd never. We'd never been busier. I would say the environment now is almost as challenging.
Now, is this a franchise or is this all your idea?
All my idea. I think that's.
Awesome.
The inside of my brain probably looks like that. Oh, for what?
Thank you for doing this. I mean, a business that's going wildly popular. Not a warehouse. I mean, seriously, I wasn't joking. I mean.
I told Tina I just had.
Not a warehouse. I mean, we're for it.
I told her, I said, I just had a meeting with Bill Campbell a couple of weeks ago. He was building that top call for the development project. And he wants me to do something there. He goes, oh, that's crazy. I'd be so excited.
Now, so if if everybody, our guests could just settle down out there.
Oh, we're sorry.
Yeah, we're we're recording, so we're going to start the Economic Development Committee meeting on this May 4th, 3:30. Do we have any courtesy of the floor?
I do have something.
Thank you so much.
It won't be five minutes. I'm trying to keep my, you have a very long presentation scheduled from the Planning Commission tonight, so I'm going to try and keep.
I can't wait, yes.
I'm doing this so to keep my report down. May 3, 2023, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 appropriated $5 billion to provide housing services and shelter to individuals experiencing homelessness and other vulnerable populations to be allocated by formula to jurisdictions that qualified for Home Investment Partnership Program allocations in fiscal year 2021. On September 13, 2021, the department published CPD Notice 21-10 titled "requirements for use of the funds in the Home American Rescue Plan program." The notice, which you are encouraged to review to assist in developing your program. As the participating jurisdiction, PJ, you are responsible for ensuring that all grant funds are used in accordance with all program requirements. In accordance with the notice and the Home ARP Grant Agreement, APJ, as of the federal award date, may use up to 5% of its total award for administrative and planning costs before HUD accepts its Home ARP allocation plan. Your Home ARP allocation plan has been accepted by HUD and the remaining award will be made available. Home ARP funds, 5% for administrative planning, $116,939.05. Home ARP remaining funds, 95% of allocation, $2,221,841.05. Total Home ARP award, $2,338,781. HUD congratulates Northampton County on its grant award, and we look forward to assisting you in your program goals. If you have any questions or need further information, we can contact Kathleen McCarthy, Community Planning and Development Representative. And this is from Nadab Binum, CPD Director, Office of Community Planning and Development. So the purpose of me, in addition to sharing the good news that we're getting 2 million, $2.3 million to continue the fight against homelessness in Northampton County, I thought you'd like to know that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. You know what? I was reading.
Hey, great. How are you?
Good, how are you? Can I just ask you a question? I did see in the NAGO news that there are some entities that are using that money or some sort of money for housing foster children as they come out from 18 to 24. So when they come out of their foster care homes, they're using them that money to rehouse them. Are we?
So that's that's interesting. We'll have to talk to Sue about that and because I know that they do different things with respect to trying to bridge that gap for the foster children, because it can be very bracing to just be cut loose into the world right out of foster care. And some people never really get their footing again from having that happen to them. So I know we're working on those issues.
Okay.
I don't know about this particular money. If you could forward that to me, if you could get your hands on that article, I can take a look at that.
I will. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So the presentation from Hangdog. Good evening, everyone. We have with us today on behalf of Hangdog, Wilson Williams Township's newest, latest, greatest, soon-to-be family-friendly attraction, Mr. Mike McCrary, who is the CEO or CEO of Fun, I think, as he likes to be referred to. So without further ado, Mike, all you have to do is just press two.
Hi, thank you for your time today. A little explanation as to what we're building here. All right. A little bit about myself and our project. We're in the process of building what will be the largest adventure ropes course in the northeast U.S. outside. Underneath the course itself, we have what is called a shipping container park retrofitting application. So we've retrofitted shipping containers to build restrooms and retail space, a bar where a brewery will serve beer and other refreshments, as well as an outdoor beer garden area where live music and food and beverage will be served. We're in the business of fun. 16 years ago, I opened Lehigh Valley Grand Prix located in Allentown, Pennsylvania. It's an indoor carting facility where we also have axe-throwing and food and beverage as well. During COVID, we were shut down and the wheels started turning, and we came up with this crazy concept that we thought would fit a lot of needs for families in this new world that we live in. You know, our mission is to bring entertainment to new heights through investing in our team and providing unique, high-adrenaline adventure-based offerings with exceptional food and beverage. Everything we do is to get people off the couch, and I think COVID taught us a lot about how much we enjoy being outside and having kids of my own, trying to find things to do with them that is enjoyable for a four-year-old all the way up to 100-year-old. That's how this concept was born. You know, myself, my manager Ryan, who's been with me since October of '07, is our COO of Fun. He's the magic behind the scenes that makes it all work. And Curtis, our marketing extraordinaire, and my fiancee Carleen, who actually does our sales, are all part of our leadership team. We're an amusement park with a twist. So if you were to come to visit Hangdog, there's no entrance fee. You pay for what you want to do. So say we have a family of four show up. The parents, we hope, will climb, because it's a lot of fun to engage with the kids on the course. But if they so wish not to, there's no fee to come into the facility. We will have policies such as Dorney Park where we need chaperones with children. We don't want unleashed beasts running around the place. But it's an amusement park with a twist, because we took the concept of an entertainment venue, and we kind of thought about the experience of what we'd be looking for. And we wanted a natural experience where the food and beverage is actually inspiring and priced at reasonable rates, which in the amusement world is, you know, it's an anomaly. It doesn't happen. We were looking for a great outside space. As COVID taught us the enjoyment of being outside, and we're looking for a place that's going to get us all off the couch. And that's where we come into an adrenaline-based activity. So those are the true inspirations behind the park itself. Construction. We started moving dirt with site work at the end of '22. We were in the process right now of hopefully recording our plans with the county in the next week or two, and we hope to have the park open in July of '23. You're probably thinking, how in the world do they get it open that quick? And the process for building the park is kind of interesting in the fact that the shipping containers are actually retrofitted at a specialty shop out in Michigan, and they'll show up fully permitted and ready to go. So we literally just put the foundations in the ground and plop them on top and plug them in, you know, make sure everything works. The course itself had already been pre-engineered and pre-built, and it's simply just putting it together like a big Lego set on-site with a crane and a couple people. So as far as the timeline for construction, it's a quick process once we have those plans recorded. The project budget, holy cow, we didn't think that'd be the number we're staring at. When we got into this thing, we thought this would be about a three-and-a-half-million-dollar project. It ended up hitting 5.7. As we all know, inflation has been real. It's something that I don't think anybody truly could have accounted for, and we continue to fight that battle. As we saw, I think banks just increased interest rates again a quarter of a point this week. So these funds were a huge help in getting us to this point to overcome a lot of these hurdles that have hit us over these last couple of years. Community impact, what we do. We're in the business of fun. We'll be facilitating school field trips, fundraising opportunities, birthday parties, family fun, summer camps, and we're working on an internship program right now with Northampton Community College. We're also going to be working with them on training our employees. They have a hospitality management training program that I was not aware of until a few weeks ago. So working with local establishments to help train our people as well as to help grow the hospitality industry back. And we all know it's a real struggle finding help in the trades or in hospitality. COVID was brutal to the hospitality industry. Outdoor recreation. This is something that the state has put an emphasis on. As we were just in a meeting in Easton maybe a month ago, talking about how outdoor recreation improves the quality of life. It attracts a better workforce and, you know, it attracts a healthier environment. Mental health is a big issue that we all combat every day. Getting out there, working, working out, getting that fresh air, those are all major contributors to having good health. You know, teaching kids to get off the couch is probably our biggest hurdle today. Not a fan of video games. We're in the business of counterbalancing that. But as far as the community impact, you know, we're heavily involved in the community at Lehigh Valley Grand Prix, and we intend to be heavily involved in the community out here with Hangdog. Jobs. We're anticipating over 40 new jobs, some part-time for kids off school in the summers, college kids back from school in the summer, as well as full-time hospitality management positions, food and beverage management positions, chef and cooks. As I said, food and beverage is a major part of what we do. Marketing and event planning as well. This this model is to expect the unexpected. We'll be doing events weekly to draw on people to have fun. Everywhere from in October, getting a pumpkin with your climb to decorate afterwards, to enjoy the time with friends and family after you climb. You know, we'll have Easter egg hunts and all kinds of different fun events going throughout the year. And these jobs are great jobs. They're solid-paying jobs. They're competitive jobs, and we're excited to be bringing them in. We also, as you saw on our earlier slide, we really focus on our people. The way we've been able to navigate through this crazy world we live in, we opened in August of 2007. I think everybody's probably familiar with what happened 12 months later. And we found ways in investing in our people and investing in what we do to create a great work environment. And without that, we'd be in the revolving wheel of many companies, going through people constantly. We're fortunate. You know, even our young people stay around longer than we expect. We're very fortunate in that regard. Tourism. You probably recognize the location. Being on the highway, last exit in Pennsylvania, right next to New Jersey, it's no accident. We recognize that New Jersey will be a major part of what we do. Our targeted focus is roughly 45 miles as a crow flies, but we'll have marketing efforts in New York City and throughout the entire region, all the way down to Harrisburg and beyond. Tourism's big. We'll be working hand-in-hand with Discovery Lehigh Valley, working to bring the groups in for the weekends. Hopefully that hotel tax continue to climb to help generate more revenue for the state. We spend a lot on marketing. You know, I have the $125,000 as an annual marketing spend. When you put that together with Lehigh Valley Grand Prix, the actual spend is about a quarter million dollars annually on marketing efforts. Having two locations, that helps grow that effort and hit more people. Regional impact. We're going to have a high volume of out-of-state visitors. We're projecting almost 60% of our total traffic to be from out-of-state. And as I mentioned before, it's an engaging product for overnight weekend stay guests. As we all know, Creola down the street, I think, hosts half a million people a year. They're a major draw to this region, and we're hoping to complement that entity and other entities around to give people more reasons to come visit and more reasons to stay overnight and make a weekend out of it. Tax revenue. Obviously, a facility that's drawing in a lot of people will generate some tax revenue for the region, both at a local, state, and a tourism level through the hotels and the overflow to other local establishments. You know, our goal is that, you know, we're right next to a strip mall at the bottom of Morgan Hill. If you're familiar, it's a dying strip mall, and we're hoping that simple overflow from our operations will help those small businesses out as well. And thank you. It's it's a unique project. It's a project that, you know, once we start talking about, people get a better grasp as to what we're doing. We've basically taken two concepts and married them. The ropes course concept with, if you're familiar with, Blue Mountain has a course or Camelback Ski Resort has a course, and then there's this concept of the beer garden that we've seen as well. And we've taken all of these, and we've created an entertainment establishment where, you know, we have lights on the course. We have music on the course. The elements on the course, I call it chaos in the sky. We have picnic tables. We have kayaks. You're climbing over very unique features. So it's a very unique concept. It's a very unique climbing experience, and we truly are excited to be part of the community out here. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
You're at the Cedar, is that Cedar Brook Road or Cedarville Road?
Correct. Yeah.
Oh, to the left.
Yes, there's a strip mall on the left at the base of Morgan Hill. We're actually located behind the strip mall on Route 78, so directly next to Phantom Fireworks on the highway.
So that's right where the baseball field might have been in that area.
We're pretty close. Correct.
So I have a question. How many ropes courses and adventure apparatus do you have? Like, you said that it's kind of like an amusement park. So is everything, like, dangerous or is there?
No, it's a great question, because when you think about climbing four-story-high ropes courses, that's a fair point. The harness system we use, it's a pretty neat technology. So you have two hooks essentially that you tie into the course with, and you're never disengaged with the course at all times. So you can only disengage one at a time is the way the system's designed. The course itself is kind of one large structure. There's a lower-level course for ages four to seven, and then the rest of the course itself is for ages eight and up.
Okay, because I always get a little wary, like, you have to sign a liability form, I'm sure, but when you mix alcohol and activities, you know what I mean? It even bothers me a little bit that there's axe-throwing at Music Fest, because I'm like, like, you know, I'm a worst-case-scenario kind of gal.
You know what's crazy?
Go ahead.
In the insurance world, which is probably the easiest way to judge safety, right? This is safer than bowling.
What? Really? Because of the harness?
Step over that line. That's a tough day. It's actually safer from an insurance perspective than bowling, which is crazy to say out loud, because you think of what this is, and it's slip and falls, right? That's probably number one, and bowling probably has a lot of it. But it's a really safe activity, being in the go-kart world.
Because of the harness?
Because of the harnesses, yeah.
Okay. And how do you, I guess you would just control consumption in some way?
Yeah, I mean, just like any establishment, I mean, we're not going to have people drink and then climb, right?
Okay.
So, you know, that's something we'll monitor. Safety's got to be number one. We're not going to be in business if we're not safe.
Yeah.
We do have a full liquor license at the go-kart track, and we've had zero problems in 15-plus years, 16 this August. So, you know, we know how to police it. We know how to monitor it, and, you know, safety's always number one. And this is an establishment that families are a priority. I mean, when we built this thing, the family was in mind. So the last thing we want is an unsafe, unruly environment.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I was just wondering how you were getting over that obstacle.
Yeah.
Mr. Cusick?
You mentioned the brewery. Will you be doing that yourself, or will you be leasing that or bringing somebody in to do that work?
Sure. I will not own the brewery. It's more of a distribution, not distribution, a selling location is what it's deemed on the brewery license. So there'll be no physical brewing on-site.
Okay.
The majority of the brewing is actually contracted out to local breweries that they partner with, I believe.
Okay.
Like Wirebacher?
Wirebacher could be doing some.
Yeah, that was just going to be my suggestion. But then the other question I had is, you're here because there's an R cap grant. Could you maybe tell us how much it's for and how you intend to use it?
Sure. The total grant is for $350,000. There's, I believe, civil engineering fees, design fees, construction management, and land acquisition costs that the funds are currently, I believe, pointed towards.
Thank you and good luck.
Hey, thank you so much.
I know. I'm excited about this.
You're going to be able to handle bigger, fellas?
Oh, yeah.
So you're going to, you won't be a weight restriction on any of this?
I believe the weight restriction is roughly 300 pounds for the course.
That don't happen for big guys, then.
Safety first is what he said.
Yeah, I can double-check. I can double-check that. That's me going off my memory. I think the majority of my efforts have been to get to get this open, and once I can get into the details of operating here in the next few weeks. Thank you so much.
Did you have something to say, Mr. Lot?
Apologize if you explained this before I got here, but you're right up against 78, correct?
Correct.
Did you have buffer plans with that, or you want to be seen from 78? Or what's your thought with being so close to 78 with the physical activities right there?
It's a it's a big billboard, essentially. I mean, we are, we're visible. You know, just like Dorney Park, you would see the rides from the road. It gives us the opportunity to be visible, and at night, we do some really neat lighting on the course, so add to the excitement and the experience. You know, that is very unique to this industry. Nobody has really focused on evening climbing. Most facilities are mostly daytime-driven. So we looked at that as a major opportunity to essentially double our capacity throughout the day and also to create a really cool experience in the sky.
So you're looking at 78 as a marketing tool for you opposed to, a lot of people try to buffer it all the way away from them. Just curious.
Yeah, the way the way the site sits, which wasn't really planned, I must say, but it sits just below the highway. So there is a buffer if you're just hanging out, listening to live music. But as you start ascending the course, the highway becomes more visible.
What's going to be hours of operation? Or have you even thought about that yet?
No, the general season, I mean, April 1st through till Mother Nature lets us keep going, which we're hoping early November. And as far as hours, 10 to 10 would be, you know, a generic operating. We're not a late-night establishment. It's past my bedtime personally, but we're not a late-night establishment. We're looking for more of that daytime and evening activity.
Will the music venue be open at night in your off-season, like from November till April?
We're all outside, so.
Oh, so it's like a beer garden kind of thing?
It is. Yeah, if you want to see pictures, hangdoglv.com is the website, and we do have Instagram and Facebook going right now, which shows a lot of neat renderings for the venue. It's very colorful, which is, again, an opposite approach to the typical ropes course experience.
Great. Any other questions? Best of luck.
Oh, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Presentation from Northampton County Housing Authority. So totally switching gears. We are excited to bring to you an update from our Northampton County Housing Authority Executive Director, who I am pleased to introduce Ms. Gwen Didden, who is just going to give an update of everything she's been fixing and changing since she's taken the leadership to the buildings.
Hi, everybody. I'm not going to be as fun as the CEO of Fun. I promise you, I do try to make housing fun, but it's not going to be quite that exciting. We keep our feet on the ground, firmly planted on the ground. And I do want to send greetings from our board president, Michelle Roy. She was hoping to be here with me today and wasn't able to, so she said hello and sent her her greetings. So for those of you who don't know, we started, Berks County Housing Authority partnered last August 1st. We took over, so about nine months ago. So we know what happens in nine months, and I do feel like the baby was born just recently. What our holdings are with the Housing Authority, so you're aware, Northampton County Housing Authority, we have two public housing buildings that equal about 109 units. We have a property in Gett, in Bethlehem, that has 54 units. That's a PHFA-owned building or funded building that we took over from Lehigh Valley Development Corp. in 2019. And then we have a program with our Housing Choice vouchers, which is about 750-plus vouchers that we make available to those who qualify for the people here in this community that are unable to afford the full rent of the burden of rent in this community. So let me just read a little bit of what I wrote. I wanted to make sure my thoughts were down so I didn't go rogue, and you get the full picture of what we're doing. So August 1, 2022, we received the keys to the building. There were no staff. It was me. We brought some people up from Berks to sort of get us started, but we spent the entire month interviewing and determining what the needs of the organization were and getting to know the tenants and just all the all the parts, all the pieces. We got fully staffed by the end of that month, except for the maintenance. That was a little bit more difficult to get staffs. That took us about two months, and thank you, Northampton County, for helping us with that. But we've had, we had just about every position filled, got everybody on-boarded, and then began training for the HUD, all the HUD regulations, making sure that people were aware of what was needed. And let me just say, because I think I understood the assignment, we hired from here. We didn't hire from Berks. We didn't bring up from Berks. We wanted people that are connected to the community and are willing to grow with us and build with us. So the people that work here live in this community, except for me, although I feel like I do because I'm here a lot. And I just might want to these days. You just never know. So anyway, I do have to say we have the best team around. I'm going to brag, but they are a wonderful, a wonderful team that had to totally come in and catch the vision of what we were doing, because we had nobody there to really have the institutional knowledge or anything. So it's a great team. Within the first three weeks, the property manager, Jim, was able to work with the Nazareth Police Department to apprehend and seek conviction for someone who had been suspecting of robbing the Oliver Border House tenant units for over a year and a half. The suspect was apprehended and removed and with alleged 22 counts of burglary that he had, this person had to address. Apparently, this had been an ongoing problem, and so that was a hot-ticket item to me that we get the safety restored to the building. So needless to say, the Oliver Border House received all-new locks and security upgrades on entrance and apartment doors, a new security system with upgraded cameras, cameras and surveillance system, all being able to be viewed in real time on my cell phone or on our computers, and access to entrance doors were also controlled via a designated laptop. So I think our residents feel much safer now. They know that they're being cared for. Those are the things that kind of keep me up at night, so that was important. So speaking of new systems, thanks to a grant from Northampton County, we were able to purchase staff computers, printers, our own server. We had to enhance the wiring in the building because it was a little bit older and we needed more bandwidth, so we were able to do that, get our security protections in order. That was all done, again, within that first month, month and a half. So we we had a lot of moving parts going on. So once staff was established, equipment was purchased, we began to look at the physical structures and much-needed upgrades and repairs. We had two units that were taken sort of off the books. We called them zombie units. They had. The we had two units that were taken sort of off the books. We called them zombie units. They had significant damage to them. HUD gives only a certain amount of time to get those redone and back on. Time was ticking. We were at sort of coming to the end. So I'm excited to say by the end of probably next week, they will be totally remodeled with um ADA compliance. And we already have tenants that are fighting to be able to go into those apartments because they're so done so well. So I welcome you to come take a tour if you're ever interested in in see our upgraded um upgraded units. I think for me, the more important thing is I know how long our waiting list is, and I think to myself, these units can be used. They shouldn't be sitting here waiting to be tended to. So that's the part that gets me excited. We can get people into those. Also, uh, we also before em before, when we have empty units, before they're rented, we are actually renovating them. We're upgrading, we're putting new flooring, we're putting new kitchens. Some of them, rather than cutting out tubs so people that have mobility issues, we're putting in the showers that they can walk in. So we are doing a lot of upgrades. It is my goal and I believe the board's goal and heart that we want units that either our family members or ourselves would want to live in. So we're we're doing our best to make them appealing, um, not extravagant, but appealing to live in. Okay, so the second item um that was again funded through the county is for our senior center that's housed in the Oliver Border House. And we are working on uh upgraded ADA bathrooms for those senior centers and um also new PTAC units. So they should be started within, I would say, the next thirty days. We have the bids, we're ready to go. The seniors are looking really forward to being able to have, you know, automatic doors and things that when they're going in with walkers, they're not trying to go in and, you know, all that kind of stuff you can imagine. So we're excited about that. Uh, we have future plans also to upgrade the community rooms in both of our 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 public housing units. But at Oliver Border, we're hoping to do something with the outside area as well. There was some issues with um water runoff, water drainage. There were, I guess, trees removed and the natural growth that would have absorbed those waters were all removed. So we have a soggy mess in the back that we're going to be working on. That's our next phase. We also, because HUD has um made it that all their buildings are to be smoke free, that you can smoke twenty five feet away from any entrance. We're looking into sort of a safe smoking area to be put in the back um that people can go in any type of weather and go do that so they don't have that excuse to wanna smoke in their apartments. I don't wanna have to evict somebody for smoking. We wanna be able to make, you know, I'm not gonna be the smoking police, but we need to have a place for them to go that's safe and, you know, they can go out and and do that. So we're looking in that. Have not forgotten about Howard Jones in Bath or or Gett Street Property. Both properties are undergoing much needed upgrades. For example, Howard Jones will be getting a completely repaved and painted parking lot this spring. The tenants are very excited about that. We'll have that done. We're also doing work in the community room. Apparently, there was some water damage in there that was left untended to, so we're going to get the the address the water damage, have everything um redone, floors, um, cracks, all that taken care of. So so we don't have any of that to to worry about. We're looking at tankless water heaters in that in that building and additional improvements that are definitely long overdue. Gett Street is having uh new outside lighting, very bright outside lighting for, I don't know if anybody is familiar with Gett Street in Bethlehem, but this property is on a dead end, right at the bottom of a dead end. Apparently, it has become a little bit of a lover's lane, and so so the tenants do not wanna have that around. So we are gonna light it up. So hopefully that will deter a little bit um from people um going down into that area. Um, we're also.
We're to attract them.
Yeah, that's my other thing, but well, hopefully then we can leverage the cameras we're putting outside. I don't know, we'll see. So anyway.
So you're putting cameras and lights there?
Everything.
You're like just.
Inside, outside, the whole nine. We're doing it. Yeah, but we're we're doing it. So um and I will say, this is, each building now has an active tenant association. And so this is their request. These are the things that the tenants have come to us. I there's things I could tell them I think they need, but I wanna hear what they think they need. So these are the things we address first. When the tenants are coming to us with these concerns, we wanna address those first. Because once again, remember, these buildings are elderly disabled buildings. And again, these are the things that keep me up at night when I know I have, you know, almost two hundred tenants that need to be safe and secure at night. So that that's, I think that's important. So we're also getting some new um automatic doors at Gett Street because people are getting, having a hard time coming in and out, so we're getting that done. I could go on and on. We're doing all kinds of improvements and um I think you're gonna see over probably next year this time. It's gonna be totally different um communities to live in. So as I mentioned earlier about the strategies to remodel the units when they become vacant, we are leveraging our capital fund grants that we receive through HUD to do that. Reason we're doing that is because I think the future, what I'm seeing in HUD, the future could possibly be that HUD wants to get out of the real estate business. They're fine with the HCV, you know, with the being a helping supplement landlords. They don't wanna own these real estates any longer. There's something called RAD conversions that we could actually at some point take our public housing units and we would own them. They give us the deeds and we would actually own them, but we would have to actually make it work like a business rather than entitlement.
What does RAD stand for?
That is a good question. I do not remember, and I was gonna write it down and I didn't, but I will Google it for you because I have a cheat sheet of three hundred acronyms that HUD uses.
You get a lot of those here, so you.
Yeah, I will send that to you. I'll send you the whole cheat sheet. It is interesting.
So if we owned those buildings, we would have to maintain them?
Yes, so what, how it works in a nutshell, I'm sure there's a lot more to it, but how it works in a nutshell is they would give us the deeds free and clear and they would give us vouchers to go with those units. So e- instead of being supplemented through capital funding and operations funding, we would have, just like a private landlord, we would be able to charge through the HCV program um the a rent, and then the tenant would pay their portion, the thirty percent of their gross adjusted income for rent. So it would be that shift. We would own it. It would be our asset, but we would now have to make it work financially.
As a business?
Correct. Correct.
We would be in the business of owning property?
It would be a nonprofit, still a nonprofit organization, but yes.
So under the umbrella of the county or under housing?
So, yeah, so I again, uh, big view of it, not that I don't know the nitty gritty details yet, but I can tell you that um the the county agreed and voted to have the Housing Authority, so it would still say the stay the county asset. It just would be that it would now, we would be sympathetic landlords like we are now, but we wouldn't be getting the grant funding that now, doesn't mean that we couldn't get other grant funding because we still would be a nonprofit. So we could be eligible for other grant funding. One of the reasons that I find it exciting right now in this industry is I've I tend to be very entrepreneurial and I love that we're going from that entitlement to the fact that now we get to be a solution without all these heavy regulations, right? So, I mean, it's great. They give us this free money, right? But there's a lot that comes with it. When much is given, much is required. So I think that could be something in the future if we can make it work financially. But makes sense to me that since HUD is saying you can do it, not you must do it yet, that might happen. Right now, they're saying you can. Let's leverage whatever monies we're getting for free now to upgrade these units. So when we do need to become competitive, if that happens, it's done.
You're done.
We don't have to borrow money to do that. So that's what makes sense to me.
Smart.
Okay, um, all right, let me.
Sorry to keep you off.
That, no, that's okay. There's, I love questions and answers. Um, all right. So I'm gonna say enough about the physical structures. We could talk about that later all day, but I wanna talk about my favorite part, and that's the tenants. We have um a, I think, a great rapport. Um, the staff and I enjoy getting to know them. Uh, we I spend time, like I said, we have a tenant meeting, active tenant groups in all three of our places. We wanna hear from them. We, it it's been very interesting listening to the hopes and dreams of our tenants and the vision and the excitement as they see all these things happening for their um for their communities, and I think that's great. My staff is going more of a marketing mi- model. We're actually getting a brochure together. So when tenants, when potential tenants come in to get their paperwork done, we're gonna show them what they, what what they're gonna get when they move into this community, just like they would in any other type of community that they would be applying to. We wanna take the stigma away of this whole, you know, entitlement. I don't, it doesn't matter to me what you're paying. What you're paying is relative because it's what you can afford. So I think that we want them to know that this is uh this is really a benefit and a blessing. Um, the other thing is, is we are working right now on securing a grant through HUD for a supportive service coordinator, which is in essence a case manager that will be available for our tenants and will be here full time at Northampton County. We have one in Berks. It's working out well, so we'd like to see that for Northampton County as well. As you know, a lot of our tenants do have some issues, and especially if they're aging in place or they don't have a lot of support system. We want them to have somebody that can intervene for them before it becomes a problem.
So they travel from site to site?
Yeah, yeah. It's only about eleven miles, so it's not too bad. Yeah, yeah. In Berks, we have scattered, we have ninety miles of scattered sites, so this one makes it a little easier. Yeah, yeah. But they'll be in charge of the tenant meetings too and things like that. So I just think, you know, it it that will just enhance what we're doing already. And that we can get us a three-year grant through HUD still, so we're gonna work on doing that, establishing that one. And I don't wanna forget about the landlords who participate in our Housing Choice voucher program. They are also amazing. I have to say, as an outsider sort of being welcomed into this community, um, my experience with this community, it reminds me of the Berks County I grew up in. Berks County has changed a lot, but it reminds me a lot of that neighbors helping neighbors and people that still have those values that landlords that will call me and say, we have uni, I have a unit, I have an extra, you know, place to rent. I wanna participate because it's the right thing to do to help somebody. That just warms my heart because I don't hear it so much anymore. I don't know, I would assume because of where we are here, you have more of the New York influence. Berks County for a long time didn't know if it wanted to be Philadelphia or New York, and I think Philadelphia is winning because now Pottstown, which is right outside of Berks County, is considered Greater Philadelphia. So I think Philadelphia is coming up the pike there, but New York's coming down the pike here. So we we do need to still preserve our values, and I really appreciate that there are people that um wanna do that and reach out to us proactively to do that. I I, like I said, I think that's what makes this so important. If you have paid attention to what the fair market rents were for this year, oh, my word. Now, I'm not gonna tell you how long I've been doing this. It wasn't that long at all, believe me, but um never saw them jump up two hundred dollars a month every unit. Two hundred, twenty four hundred dollars a year more, and that's for efficiencies. That's for one bedrooms. I mean, who can afford this stuff? You know, that's how important our HCV program is because we do still make it affordable. I'm working on um possibly launching at some point a program where we can use our, a portion of our vouchers to do homeownership as well, which I think will be also build that continuity and and help people to um to put stakes in the ground here. So we're working on that in the future, future plan. Lot of training, been doing a lot of training for that. But without these private landlords, we wouldn't exist, and if we ever do the RAD conversion, we will probably be one of the largest of those landlords um in the county to be doing that with those those vouchers. So I think the best part for me is when I see the smiles on the tenants' faces, especially during the monthly board meetings. Because the first one I came to, there weren't many smiles. Now they're smiling and they're there, and I keep waiting. Like, I wait for them to, you know, come with their complaints and they're just happy and it's great. So I think that's a win. I think that's a win. The commissioners, almost every meeting will say at the end, they're still smiling. That's all we need. You know, we're good. You know, I think they went through some of the roughest parts of it, so um they're happy that we're all still smiling. So that's great. I just wanna thank you all that you voted to take back your authority because I think this is so important. It's a it's a it's a social service asset, although that has not always been the view of housing authorities, but it is. It is a very needed social service asset in this community, and if it gets, if we let it go, you're not gonna get it back. They're not doing any more public housing. They're not um encouraging that type of mo- model any mindset anymore. So I'm just glad and grateful that you all had the foresight to say, let's fight for our asset and take it back and establish it. I believe that I understand the assignment and I um work every day to make sure that we can build it strong. So how I understand the assignment is one, to reestablish the Northampton County Housing Authority as a Northampton County asset, that it can stand on its own two feet, living within its means and not missing any opportunity to grow. I also believe that we're to make it on a on a strong foundation, number two, and um making sure that we can be an influence of affordable housing, a voice of affordable housing and a forerunner to look at what trends are coming, what do we need to look at because we're seeing this happen? And I'll give you an example. Um, when I worked in in Lancaster County, I was getting calls for people who were coming to the county to, and they they needed help with like a, you know, a disabled uh relative or child or sibling. And I'm getting these calls from all over and I I'm thinking, why are people calling all, like, why are people moving to Lancaster County? I came to find out, it is the number two retirement destination in the country. So people are moving there and and, you know, wanting to come for the charm of Lancaster County, but they can't leave their siblings, their disabled siblings or children behind, but yet they don't have capacity to keep them. So they were looking for placement. So I needed to go to the county and say, all right, I'm seeing a trend here. What are we doing to prepare for this? Because these are the things that we're that we're gonna have to address. Otherwise, it's going to become a county issue and your social service budget is going to swell. So how can we be proactive and develop partnerships and and ways that people can do that? Because they're coming, whether you want them to or not, right? So you want them to be here to to retire, they're going to bring their families. So just to give you an idea, when I start seeing trends, you may hear me come back to you and say, all right, let's just start a dialogue because I'm seeing this and we might wanna be prepared.
Yeah, that's important.
Very, very. Um, yeah, yeah, it is. And then I think the third, the third goal for me is to cultivate the next generation of housing providers. I want their, my ceiling to be their floor. The things we have built on over the years, the the way we have done housing, the good, the bad, whatever we can glean from it, and how can we make it better and stronger and more equitable moving forward? So I think that is for me the 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 biggest goal right now. So I'm gonna thank you all for the opportunity of letting Berks County Housing Authority, including myself, be part of this community. I, I'll tell you, people keep asking me, does the commute bother you? No, because I really enjoy um what we're doing here and I see that the best is yet to come. I really do. So any questions?
I have a couple. So explain the partnership between Berks and Northampton County. It's very different from the relationship we had with Lehigh County, right? Because you had said that Northha, the the goal is for Northampton County to stand on its own, right?
Absolutely. I don't do anything commingling with Berks. The only thing is that is myself and one other staff member spend half of our time and half of our time here and in Berks. You all have your own email net, you know, your own server network. Everything that was commingled before has been disentangled and established under Northampton County Housing Authority. I just had this conversation today. We were um trying to release a line of credit somewhere that is intermingled somewhere else and put it under Northampton County. Berks could have done it as the parent, and I said, absolutely not. We need to establish our own credit here. We need to be able, you know, we need to grow up. So there's no reason for us to do that. So even though it takes a little little longer, we do that. I don't bring anything from Berks for for Northampton. Northampton buys their supplies here. I think the habit before was you just grabbed it at a central shop, no matter where it went. No, we have our own supplies here, our own inventory here, our own staff here. Other than me and the other, myself and the other woman, everybody else is from this community.
And how many full-time staff do you have?
We have nine.
Nine? And they're spread.
I'm sorry. Well, seven full-time and then myself and the other.
Seven full-time and they're spread out.
Yes, I have one property manager for the for the three buildings. I have an AP sort of management aide who does AP. I do have a fee accountant that does our finances. Um, again, I could have had my controller at Berks do it, but I I wanted us to establish here. So he does a great job keeping us going and keeping us compliant. Um, and then we have uh two full-time maintenance, one janitorial. We have one HCV support, one waiting list person, and that's it, and we work wonders.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Yeah, yeah. It's the German in me, I got to be efficient. I can't stand when there's too many layers.
Yeah, because you're out from Berks, I got it, I got it.
Yep, can't help it. I love efficiency, German engineering.
You're not much if you're not Dutch, right?
I like that.
I know, right? I got it. So I'm familiar with Berks, but, yeah, so...
Don't hold that against me, if you're familiar with Berks County.
No, no, no. No, no, I, I love Lancaster and Berks County. I, I've worked with them on other projects. But I think it's also important to understand, do we have more capacity for the future? And what are we looking at? I get that we're kind of mired in right now trying to iron things out. Is there capacity in the future to expand our housing?
Yes.
If we don't go in this RAD conversion?
Yes.
Are funds coming in that would allow us to do that?
So I do think, number one, that yes, the short answer, absolutely, we have capacity. What, what we're looking at is building what's called our property management side, right? Because you're not going to get any more public housing. There's a moratorium on that, we're not building anymore. So the, the obvious thing then would be, let's look at how we can do this through a nonprofit type of thing. So we recently discovered that evidently, which I didn't know till recently, that Northampton County Housing Authority does have a development corporation on the books. We're trying to find all the, the evidence of that, but we know in the, that the state has it registered. So we're looking at, is that something we can grow and maybe be a chodo for the county? And then be able to do a lot more of that non, that nonprofit development type of, of lower-income housing. So that would be a wonderful asset and, and proper, for here. I did start the development corporation in Berks County through the housing authority there years ago when I was on the board, so I'm very familiar with how to do it and very excited to get, you know, get, get going on it. So we can do that. I think we're going to find that some of the buildings that were built in this community with tax credits, they have been satisfied, so we might be able to pick some things up on a fire sale, who knows? Like, we're keeping our options open. We're willing, I think the board, I, I serve at their governance, but I think they would be absolutely willing to do more if we can.
That'd be great because there's such a need for housing and affordable housing.
Absolutely.
So I'm absolutely thrilled to hear all of this and, and to have you here in our county.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we're onward and upward.
I'm all about it. I, I remember meeting with the people at Oliver C. Border House when, before all this happened and they, they were just in despair at their, at their conditions of their housing and the way that we're getting treated and I think that everybody deserves dignity.
Absolutely, 100%.
And that's a, that's an important thing because all the things that you do show how much you care, not only about the structure, but the people.
Absolutely.
And I think, you know, that's our main priority too, is like making sure, it can be affordable housing, but it's dignified.
Absolutely, there's no reason to not.
Yeah.
There really isn't. I mean, it, it could be any one of us, but by the grace of God, it could be any one of us.
I know.
Right?
Yeah.
And, and, you know, I'm not going to put my preacher's hat on, but you know, morally and ethically, the poor will always be among us. We need to, we need to take care of people.
Yeah, I feel that way too. Thank you.
Yep, anything else?
Any other questions? Mr. Myers?
Maintenance.
Maintenance, yes.
Are we charging for maintenance or is it just part of what they're paying?
Who's them?
The folks who are in our homes.
If they do something to damage, just like anybody else, if they damage the unit, then yes, they are charged. If it's general maintenance, things we do, we do get, you know, funded through HUD for that, but just like anybody else, if they cause a damage, they're going to have to pay. Now HUD approves what we will charge for maintenance fees like that, so it's not like, you know, we're going to do anything crazy with that. But we do expect them to pay if they cause damage, absolutely.
Light bulbs that they...
That we take. We take care, I'll tell you what, we take care of light bulbs because I don't want elderly or disabled people getting up on ladders to, you know, so we do take care of that. I recently found out that one of our local, I think it's the MedEd, will give us energy-efficient light bulbs and, and energy-efficient showerheads and so I am making them my best friend right now so they can give us as much, I think they're giving us like insulators for underneath electrical plates and things, small things, but things that will help us with energy efficiency, so if we get a free, even better.
I was going to suggest that because I just got one of those packages in, at my home the last day or two.
Yes, yeah, and they're great, they're wonderful. So, yeah, so we're working on it, but yes, if somebody, you know, does cause damage, they have to take care of that. That's only, that's only responsible.
If it's just something that you, we repaired ourselves?
Yeah, if it's our, you know, if it's normal wear and tear, we're going to repair. And we do get inspected through HUD, so we do have to keep a certain standard that we, but we try to be as proactive as possible, you know, and I'll tell you, in Berks, we have elderly, disabled and family units. I would rather do elderly, disabled units any day of the week than the family units because they can really get beat up sometimes.
The county has three properties that we're taking care of right now, so it would be one in Bathum, one in Bathum, one in...
So two are public housing and those are county-owned. The third one is the Gett Street one, which is one that we bought from Valley Housing Development Corp. and that was done through PHFA tax credits. So that's a different funding stream and sort of has a little bit different rules to it. So, yeah, so there's three buildings. We would love to, absolutely love to do more.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Casey? Yeah, you mentioned fair market value for rent and how, how much it went up, but you didn't mention what they actually are. Would you happen to know what they are for, what, a studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
Not off the top of my head, but it should be on the, our website, but you can also Google that or I can send it, either way. We do have to publish those every year and they usually come out in October.
Okay. You mentioned the waiting list, how long is it and, and what's the process to get on it?
So I will tell you, the, the mention of the waiting list makes me do this because it was quite chaotic when we took it over, right? So we were sending out applications to people that evidently had already lived in houses and passed away and then never were taken off the waiting list. So you can only imagine, that was an administrative nightmare and it slowed us down. So what we decided to do is just close it down for a few months, do what's called a purge. So that means we sent out packets to every, over, I think it was like 3,800 people that were on our waiting list.
3,800 people?
3,800 people, for 109 units. So, and the vouchers and the, and we, I think we have somewhere around 800 some vouchers of the capacity. But that's a lot of people, right, that are waiting for housing and help, which is why I say, "We're ready to do more because we see the need." But what we would do is send that out, we give them a certain amount of time to get those back to us telling us that they're still interested to be on the waiting list. If we don't hear from them, we keep that as, you know, keep, hold that for a couple years so we can show them that we did try to reach them and then they are removed. Now they can reapply when we open it again. So we just have it, we've got it all, it's all nice and tidy now, we have things all, all ready to go. You will probably see and you'll see it in the paper, you'll hear it, they'll, we'll let all the homeless providers and continuum of care know and then we'll also put on our website when that opens, when the waiting list opens. We're hoping to have it open again this summer. So, but this time, we won't be wasting months because, see, we have a whole protocol we have to do. So if your name comes up, we have to send you a packet, you have to fill that packet in, you're given a certain amount of time to get that back to us. We have to, you know, then vet you and, and it, and when we do all that and then find out they've lived in the building and are now deceased, that just wasted weeks of somebody that could have used that. So it's all cleaned up now, all, all ready to go and, and the other thing that will be a little different is in the past, they did everything sort of, they would bring people in and they'd help them fill out the applications. We can't do that because if, God forbid, somebody does fraud on their, their application, but it's in our handwriting and then we have to, they can say, "Well, you wrote it, I didn't write this." So we can't accept that. We need them to do it themselves so they are giving, they're testing that this is their information, okay? So we actually have the capacity now that they can, when it's open, they can apply right online through our website, which makes it easy and fast. It gets, gets the waiting list going quicker.
Now, it, it's based on their initial application, whether or not they're accepted for, for all these programs. I guess my question is, do we follow up to ensure that, you know, maybe somebody didn't inherit a lot of money or improve their financial situation? And if, if that does happen, do we say, "You're too well off to live here"? How does that work?
Very, very good question. HUD has two sets of, of rules and standards for the two different programs. So public housing is very interesting. You have to meet a financial criteria to get in, but once you're in, you can make as, I think, well, I can't say as much money. I think like a family of four can make over $100,000 before they're no longer allowed to be there. Now they'll still have to pay flat rent then. They would have to pay what any, what any of us would pay for a two- or three-bedroom unit in the, in the area. This is why I would like to have programs where we could help people with homeownership so that will free up that unit if they are in that situation. Housing Choice Voucher is a little different because the income threshold or the, yeah, the yearly income threshold can be a little higher, the standard. And again, that one you can, if you, if you're over income, you're off the, they give you six months grace, but then you're off the program. So there's a different, different way to look at it. Now, assets are a different story. You can have assets in public housing. We're only going to look at what interest you'd be getting on those assets that will make your income bottom line different. So we don't look at them being liquidated, we look at them being, how much you pull off of that every month to be living on. That could increase your, yeah, not my rules, that's HUD rules.
So an elder person could have like a pension or stocks or an annuity or something like that and they might get like a dividend or they have a required withdrawal that they have to make every year, but as long as that doesn't exceed the requirements, their withdrawal and their social security and income, they're good.
So what we're looking at is the interest on that lump sum. So let's say somebody's getting 3% on whatever that is, that 3% that's, that's growing on that asset every year is going to be considered income. So as long as it keeps them under that threshold, they're okay.
Oh, that's really interesting because then, like, I, I know because so many elderly people, they don't have the capacity to bring in new income.
Exactly.
And the fear is that they can't stretch what they have.
Yes.
So that's good to know. I guess, I think that's why there are so many elderly people in these homes.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you don't...
It's affordable, it's safe now, it's safe.
Then things are taken care of too. Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
Like light bulbs and...
Yes, yes, yes.
Maintenance. And that's important because you get to, at some point in your age and you're just, you don't want to cut grass anymore.
No, no, and, no, absolutely. And, you know, your kids aren't young enough so you can't make them do it, you know, so there you go.
Or they don't have time.
Yeah, there you go. And, and I think, you know, dealing with aging parents myself right now, you know, there, it, it's a blessing if you can have your parent taken care of and, you know, and not have to hide assets because HUD is not making us have, you know, you, you can't have more than $2,000 or, you know, this way it gives people that security.
So if we did the RAD conversion, would that be maintained or would we...
That might be different because again, it's going to go to HCV, so that might...
Would that be up to the county to determine?
Probably not because if it's HCV, that, that tenant is going to qualify one where, if the tenant is over income, they won't qualify.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's, there's some pros and cons with RAD. We've been looking into that.